Go ahead and call the meeting to order. The meeting to the five in the United States of America. To the other for which families. One nation under God, indivisible, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. It's all short of the palm. I didn't know there was two.
It's too short.
Oh. I forgot to raise that one. All right, we'll go ahead and start with the minutes of law training. And the addition, addition, they're changing. I'll make the motion to approve. Jay made the motion in their second.
Second.
And by Paul, we have a session. Although they say aye.
Aye.
Although the vote. Education in the bill. Any questions on the bill? If not, motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Present it. Is there a second? All second. Move by Paul, second by Jason. Any other discussion? Although they say aye.
Aye.
Although the vote. Next, it is Casey sent you the financials for December. We see a motion to accept, certainly have received them.
Make a motion to accept.
All second.
Then by Nicole, second by Paul. Any other discussion? Although they say aye.
Aye.
Although the vote. Did the delinquent bill last? If there's questions, I'm not going to approve. Just shut up. Come up with the motion. Just make the motion in their second.
All second.
And by Paul. Any other discussion? John.
Yes.
Paul.
Paul, yes.
Jason. Yes.
The commissioner's report, we'll start with Paul next.
Too much on the certification side. He's probably done that. H E D C. Just let everybody over the 425 truck coming through your showcase. Going on 1045th. I think they sent some invitations out to some people. And I guess when Pat was wondering if Casey could do that without any information, then he kind of did some stuff. She said she has a lot of money to give out here. She had her good together with you and she said she kept most of the stuff with Ash and I just haven't quite changed. If that's okay, then everybody will just use that. The lead local class that was scheduled there last fall, that's the fourth Tuesday, so if you have, if you'd like to still be on that lead local course, it still has openings, so the more the merrier there. Just contact me or else the extension office, the courthouse, they're the ones that are coordinating, so. And it is free. Everybody, anybody who wants to go, it's free. H E D C is paying for all those. Anybody that wants to go, so if you want that extra education, it's free. On the electrical side, we did have, we are getting closer and closer to getting a plan together as far as we're going to spend. But I would just throw out there right now that we're going to probably, the whole complete project could exceed over $20 million. So, it's going to, we're looking at four different phases right now. So, there was, there was three and they added another one at the last meeting for some things that they wanted to get done too, so. That's just kind of FYI. Be coming down and there'll be more information on that as we go forward, so. Only good thing on that is that the project will last sixty years. You know, so it's a lot of money, but it's, yeah, I don't even know the last time we've done anything major. I don't know if anybody could even come up with a date of when it would be done, so. But that, and nothing showed that it's more important now than these last couple of days because we're really, we're getting to the peak. We wouldn't want to go, we wouldn't want to go three or four days at 20, 30 below, so. It's getting used, we're getting a lot of, a lot of power usage, so. And what this will do is it upgrade, it makes it more. Right now we have two megawatt, five, two, five megawatt substations, if I'm correct. And when we re-up, when we update, we'll, we'll be, we'll get a lot more. We haven't decided to run with a 10 megawatt, whether Roy's still working on that. And so it'll be, so it's made, not only to update the systems, to make it a little better, it's also for expansion. So, there's a lot of stuff on that, there'll be a lot more information coming out on that. Hopefully within the next few weeks here, so. And then also we'll be doing a rate study, that's within a couple of weeks hopefully. Maybe by the next meeting we might have something. If not, the second one on that side, so. So we're getting ground on it and Roy is getting pretty restless. He's getting close to summer here, so he wants to have a plan in place, so hopefully that'll, hopefully we'll have some options for everybody and all that. Hard to handle that, but like I said, when I saw the printout of what our road was on Monday, Monday, Tuesday, you know it was, it was a lot, so. And then one other question, and I may be can ask this when Johnny gets up, is I talked to Jay too about vehicles that, where if you tag a vehicle on the street, how do they know, how does the city know it's a tag? Do you guys know? Or do you guys have a system in place?
Uh, well, we put the orange stickers on them, so.
So.
Do you have a list that you do by channels?
Uh, it'd be like on our daily logs that we keep track of them.
I guess we were just talking, is there a way we could see that so we know to go back and get these vehicles? We don't always see them. Sure.
Because the concern was, other reason I brought up to Jay was, is because, okay, so let's say you tag a car.
Yep.
They move it and the city has a notebook for two or three days, they're sitting there worrying all. They're like, move my car, they didn't come for the snow eagle. So, we were talking, he said they don't really have any real policy in place, so he was wondering maybe you could give them a list or something of addresses of the cars that are tagged, that way they can kind of keep an eye on those locations and see if those cars are moved or not.
Well, what was that we talked about? Would you guys let them know which ones are, need to be moved? Or you got issues?
No, this is ones that they've moved. They tagged them, so the owners have moved them, so we need to clear the snow.
Right, but they're not necessarily going to tell the sheriff's department that they moved it.
But that's what I'm saying, so if they, so if they can now kind of randomly, okay, so they know that, like, one morning they could drive and see, okay, XYZ car hasn't moved, so now they can clear that snow. As your truck driving around and whatever, so.
Or are you saying you want us to inform them of ones that have been held?
Well, I would say ones that you have issues with.
Sure.
Because then you know what's a tag, then you can check what has happened. If it hasn't been moved, then you can have it told.
Wouldn't they tag them before, you wouldn't know what needs to be tagged once you've done that?
Uh, usually, depending on the storm and how much snow, we try to get to it within a couple of days, depending on, you know, the interstate. Talking to stuff about the interstate all night, but we try to get to them as soon as possible. Really, right now, we really don't have a way that we need log if they move, it's more so if they don't. If they don't, after fourteen hours, they could be told by us or by the city, whoever catches it.
Sure.
And I think the way we were talking was more, you give them a list of what you got tagged, so they can go in a day or two.
Check.
And see if they moved them.
Sure. Yeah.
We don't know, because if we don't know that they've been tagged, he doesn't know.
There's been some people that have, they tagged them, they moved them.
Right.
We didn't see it was moved. And it wouldn't be fair to them that they actually made the effort to move them and we didn't go back and clean it.
Right. Let me talk to Steven, see if we can come up with something, something that we can do.
We just want to make it right for them if they actually make the effort.
Maybe it's, we can, I'm just thinking quick off the top of my head, maybe we could shoot you like an email or something after.
That would be just fine, email, if you just drop me a text, just.
Right. I'll, I'll talk to Steve, see if we can come up with something.
How many do you usually see? Half a dozen?
It varies, this year's actually been pretty decent, but no, I would say on a typical night, it's at least twelve.
Okay.
So, but no, I, we should be able to come up with something, I would think.
The reason I mentioned to him is because over my life, there's someone who was tagged, we moved it, or it's been a couple of days. And I'm sure, I could just see a citizen saying, well, yeah, they tagged my car and moved it, I moved it, then they never moved the snow, so why they move my car?
Right.
That's his thing, you know, so. Because I feel that way. If I shove off my car and moved it, and then you guys didn't kind of push the snow off for a week, I kind of say, well, it might have left it there for a while. Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
So, Paul, you were on that. Upgrade your electrical, there's a grant round that's going to come out very soon, I know. He said it's going to be this spring, fall, or this winter, spring. They already had grant round one. It's anywhere from 200 to 500, if I remember right. It's through the North Dakota Industrial Commission Transmission Authority, so. And that is for upgrading electrical transmission lines. And the quota, they got money to bury their transmission lines. And then the city got some money and so that's coming up, but maybe being preemptive, so we're ready to go. You guys want to apply for that when it comes out, so we can get working on it.
Yeah. Well, I can, Mr. Rivera, on town, I thought.
This is not one that deserves to apply for this.
Who would do that?
Well, I look at it, again, we can try to do it in ETFs now, or we've been very successful, I've been happy to help with some US grants. Those are a few good details. But there's a really quick turnaround, so whether or not we want to do that or not. When is that going to happen? When I talked to him, he said that it was sometime this spring. Would that something that you would want?
No, I think, I think it sounds like exactly what I'm looking for.
Increasing. They don't have anything there to the application, now it's not something that we're going to have there, so. See if they're, but. What does the commission think of, you want us to, should visit?
We're looking at updating it.
Is there a reason to not go after?
But I don't know how much information we need, if we have information, it's going to be, I would be going to question.
I don't know, but that's part of it. Do you want us to look at working with the US to help raise the grant?
My gap, I know that. I could like breathe. So whatever, where do you feel more comfortable? Do you feel more comfortable with them doing it or just us?
Well, we've been successful with them.
Been successful with it. And they deal with the, well, that's the cost that's going on for us?
The last time they rolled it, it was $2,000. We had to get a call from them, that's why I'm asking, we have to get a call to figure out.
Any portion?
Yes.
I don't like.
None of the budget.
I'll make a motion that we get forward to apply for this transmission grant.
Your second.
Happy interest.
Move by Paul, second by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? Jason.
Yes, Paul.
Yes, John.
Yes, Nicole.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe you also.
No.
And there is some other, like, those USDA grants that we lose. Again, you know, if we did water chores, we could help for years, we'll try to industry on the lottery and all that. For your four percent. Hopefully that can, now, and that's still better.
And this isn't something to, we've done it one year, this is going to be done over five to 10 years.
John.
Well, it's been a little long, I guess. I talked to Ben, you said Eagle State's been pretty poor, and then totally, you can't even say much about Eagle State, you know, like, the building. But Eagle State's been pretty poor in their office. They only have like one on that side wall. Other than that, that's pretty much, City Two's been doing a good job keeping its streets clear, snow. And they've been working hard at doing that, so just want to thank them for doing the good work on that, other than that, I don't like anything.
You're still.
You know, you're still evaluating it.
Um, maybe this year?
I don't think so.
Um, just an update on the Tyler Tech, it sounds like they asked Ben some more questions. So they still haven't made a decision, but they haven't said no, so fingers crossed yet, as far as I feel, it sounds like maybe by the end of this month, they'll have a, they do meetings every so often that they discuss stuff, so maybe they'll answer by the end of this month or shortly after. Anyway, one thing on the cemetery, I just thrown it out there for the commission to consider is with the, with the new spraying rates and stuff like that, it's pretty much eaten the cemetery budget, so we don't have any money to do any of the lifting and making the plot stay decent, so I don't know if there's another avenue that we want to keep, keep working towards that. I don't know if there's another way to transfer money into that, to part of another account or anything to help out, but. Probably we're just going to have to go without doing any of those lifts and stuff that we've always done. Just something to look forward as we're coming into spring and summer. Sheriff's Office, on staffing wise, we have two of our three trainees are on their own now, from the deputy side. There's still one that's in training. Both of the two new dispatches are getting close to going on their own, so hopefully here in the next, end of this month, and no later than probably in the February, dispatch should be staffed up, so good. And then one last thing on the fire department. The fire department did reach out, they did reach an agreement with Sanford. So, they will be moving forward with a plan of them being together with Sanford and new building, they're, they're planning. That's all that I have.
Um, so we, planning and zoning, they are moving forward and stuff. They're, they're talking about some different things. They're looking at updating the the application, just sort of, there's a few more things on it when planning and zoning looks at it, not when it goes out to Midwest, but there's some other stuff. But they, more than on there. They accept the resignation until they, there's an ad in the paper and on the banner, or the sign for zoning or extraterritorial zones, so it's going to be within that half mile. On purification, same thing, if they had asked for some more members, not necessarily official members, but just people to help with it. They've been trying to figure out how to do things. And as far as some of the things that, orders of projects we need to work on to purify the purely a little bit more different lots or the city lots, we talked about street signs, we talked about fence over a river park, we talked about fencing at the armory. Getting up, we talked about a memorial at the courthouse with some flags. Some stuff awards there. The one thing they asked, you know, how are we going to fund some of these things that they were working on, trying to figure out to do that. Did finally get an answer from West Fargo Animal Hospital. They were more than willing to take the animals, but they don't have enough room at the very top, so. Steve, I said it one time, he was going to light up with the mayors, we hadn't heard anything, so I sent out a message to all the mayors, asking if they want to meet last night. We had three mayors there. Casey from Gilbert. We had Carl from Mayville and myself, and so. We talked about a lot of things, more than just dogs. We talked about a lot of, a lot of different issues. But the, he is, my son would have the heart organs for dogs, and he will look at it, try to make sure that. Carl thought that would be good, so that everybody was not engaged. I'm going to try to reach out to the rest of the mayors to get them to be able to sit down and go with the mayor. But they thought that, you know, if we wanted to house it here, that would be an option. You know, obviously it's available for all the rest of the housing and the city. Will we hold it for 72 hours? They were fine with that, or Carl's still interested in that. Basically. Obviously, he's going to have to pay a little bit to make this work, so. The automated kennel cleaner, that I looked at was seven grand about, so it's, you know, it's probably going to be a $10,000 project, this kennel we anticipated to get up and going. But it would be, you know, we talked about this, they're held there for 72 hours, once they're able to adopt health. If somebody is going to, you know, if they, they didn't get picked up, obviously they'd have to go over to the vet and get cleared.
Clearance.
All of those things, if somebody's going to pick it. That was one thing that we talked about was, well, how are we going to make sure that the animals have the gravy shots and all that? Because they said they have people that confuse to get their whole vaccine, so. So there would be some requirements on that, you know. And ultimately, those cities would come back on whatever it would be if they could be informed. That was kind of their thought anyways. So we'll keep working on that, and it was kind of last minute, but hopefully next time, we have a few more and then make sure Steve can be there as well, so.
Would you, how many, probably the kennels you really need? Do you, do you have more than one for the time?
Build some streaks. You'll have none, and then you'll have four in a day, you know, and it's really hard to gauge.
It's like the worst one.
Knock on a nice new wood here, it's been a lot better. I don't know if it's because of the cold in the winter or what, but it's really kind of leveled off. Now that I said that, I'm sure tomorrow will be a different story, but.
Nobody's going to lie.
Right. It's just. So, I think right now is a, with it being the winter and stuff, I think it's a good time to kind of take our time and make sure we do it right so that it works. Rather than try to get something in place for sure before springtime when it starts to pick up again.
And West Fargo said you don't try to reach out to another vet, but would you like to do it?
And I do, I do know Steve also talked, I can't remember which one it is, the one that Fargo uses, he talked to a.
The Fargo County?
A community service officer that works down there as far as getting information and stuff, so.
And that's another option.
So that's why I say, I think the best thing we can do is, as only I said, work on getting a meeting where everybody can get together and try to get something that works for most of the communities, and like you said, even other than dog, I think it would be so helpful if we can get a lot of the communities to agree on a lot of similar ordinances, so you don't have to remember 12 different things for 12 different communities. Make it easier.
We might have a crowd, but there's, I'm really complicated. I don't know what else for, what to get.
You know, we could use some updates. When the next.
Would it be, would you help, would it be beneficial to get, I know, I know a couple of people that are showing interest in helping with that, if we did have that in town. Would it be worth getting a few of them people together and just having them talk on how something like that might look, or might even work?
Oh, yeah, and, and you know, there's a group from, that the vet is working with too, that wants to put together like a trap neuter and release. I mean, so there's a lot more extensions to this than people that love animals that would like to see something done, you know.
What would be a good way to coordinate those people to get them together?
I would think the vet could, the vet has numbers of people, but I think on Facebook. I, I mean, I think you see where, what people do, the community cares, and, and that I think would be a good opportunity. But I think you'd have to kind of lay out a basic plan, so you don't have 40 ideas coming through here and, you know.
Kind of what we talked about last night was it would be, Sheriff's Department would notify via text or however that, hey, we just put a dog in that and or is on call, you know, have a schedule, they're paid employees, they're covered under insurance. Ultimately, we probably have to give them a stipend to make sure that they are doing it, you know, whether they're on $50 a week or whatever it is that, you know, they got to go spend. X amount of time while they're in there. But that would be, the only thing on the Sheriff's Department side would be just notifying that group that, hey, we placed the dog in there, they know that.
Where's there?
That has to be determined. So the idea that, I don't know, if the Sheriff's Department has been looking at a building, so if we can get that building back that we had would be one spot for.
Sheriff's Office has been looking at a building.
I bet you guys have been getting help for building, building, or a lot.
They built the new highway shop building up in North of Mayville this last budget, but I haven't heard of any other buildings that were completed.
I thought it was.
At least not for the Sheriff's Office.
It was an advocate for.
Not for the Sheriff's Office.
I think that was for the historical society. I know it was going to build one, but maybe it was then, well, I know Steve, that one time he wanted to.
Yeah, there's been some discussion about that building.
So that's one spot that we talked about was over there. We talked about here would be another option, you know, reach out to Walden, if, maybe there would be a spot there, so it's all kind of housed together. We had the infrastructure that we bought, but there's still a lot of details to work out, so.
It would be nice to have him at the meeting too, Walden.
Right.
You know, I mean, because if they could even just take a room to put like five kennels or something in it, and so they would be safe and right there, you know.
And the only reason that this one was more, what I looked at was it was a self-cleaning, so no way to worry about, you just basically hit a button and sanitizes the whole system, so that each kennel's clean. We're not spending hours of our own, our employees' time to try to get this cleaned up after the fact, to make sure that it is sanitary between, so we're not spreading any disease. But we'll, I'll keep working on it, it was very hard just to get the three together, so. I stronger number one to make sure she was there. It was very hard just to get the three together, so I stronger them one to make sure she was there.
That's not one of these.
But there was a good discussion, most of all. And it, we've had this before, Jim had put it once a year, but not everybody always shows up. So I got to be a little bit more cautious on that plane to get them to show up or something, I don't know. All right, that is all I have for tonight. Anything from, how about first side?
Nothing that's going on there.
JR, anything coming for me? Casey?
Um, just two things. The audit is supposed to be finalized and moved over to us for 23, within this week or early next week. Oh, we're super close. And then Renaissance Zone, I was looking through that last week and discovered that I'm responsible for sending out propaganda for Renaissance Zone. So with your guys' blessing, I wanted to make some pamphlets, something to make it easy for me to send out to businesses. For your development plan, I'm supposed to be sending to residences in Renaissance Zone, businesses, realtors. There's one other group I can't quite remember, but. Yeah, builders, that might have been it. Yep, it was four different groups, so. I'd like to have something pretty easy, that they can reference and understand the program.
The one thing, if you guys want, we can look into it, on the Renaissance Zone is right now it's a five-year plan, we can go up to seven. Probably have to re-change that or we're going to amend it. But I don't want to do any work on it, if you guys don't think there's value of that. But that was changed at the state level a few years ago, so.
We're not having it on the website at all, no, we did it one time.
On your city of those programs? You do, yep, you do have it, but that's not outlined in your development plan. It doesn't say city auditor, that's supposed to be on the website, it says city auditor needs to mail out items for Renaissance Zone.
We could change that as well, in the plan, but we have to change the plan. Last night, I believe, DC was the one that put the plan together, we had the commission approve it. We are able to change our development plan, which is smart enough. You guys think we should, I think we should, that we can work on it, but I don't, we've not been working towards it, if we don't think we should.
Right now, I don't see a reason to go up to seven years, but I don't mind changing and being allowed to be posted online or something, instead of the mailing. Make the job a little easier.
We'll dig into that.
Thank you. Those are the only things that I got. All for the transfer? Sure, yep.
So Casey asked me, and asked JR, and we both were on the same opinion on it, but the auditors were questioning if the $800,000 transfer, whether it was legitimate to our ordinances. JR said it is, they looked at it as debt retirement, or in the, what we're supposed to use, those sales tax funds. But it also says in there, debt, that would cause us to raise rates, which we wouldn't raise rates, or taxes on if we were to transfer in the general fund as well. They were trying to get Casey to switch it, reverse the transfer, and then we would have ended up stuck, but it said, just so you're aware, if, if they don't come up, it's a note on, on the audit, that what we did, the transfer legally, it was just. They questioned it, so.
Yes, their definition of debt is different than what ours was, is what it came down to. Yep, they saw it as more as sufficient, rather than having a debt to pay that, so.
And they wanted to say, well, you have payments every year. We swore debt, which I think what we needed out of the general fund we have, that, that we cover for the Sheriff's Department here, so that should be covered for any services. They then backed out, they just said they were going to note it in our report, so I just wanted to make sure you're going to do that. Talking about Sheriff's Office, the community side, I don't think there's anything on the tickets, we'll be convinced. So the next item then is a recommendation from Public Works on their labor position.
Yeah, we had some positive interviews. I guess that we would like to recommend Adrian, and what was his last name? I'm sorry, I didn't bring my notebook.
It's okay, Angel Malaga.
Okay. Yes, that's who we felt would be comfortable with in our department. And then we would like to recommend, if you went with him, that he, we felt that he could, what he could bring to each three departments, we'd like to recommend him getting $21, and then have a six-month probation with a 75 cent at that point. That's what we're most comfortable with right now.
Any questions for them?
Let me look at moving that starting to 23.
It was discussed.
We'd be happy with that.
Seventeen is the minimum.
I think the state is starting at 23, right?
Yep.
State is 23, or?
Well, I think we, I think we just, I think we discussed that with, in the last meeting when we bumped, we gave him a bill for the bump, bill, a credit for the bump up to what are starting would be plus years of service, and we bumped him to 25. My memory is that we were going to start people at 23.
And I hear what's at 17.
It does.
I was changing though.
And it's just starting.
Right.
You can make a motion, uh, here, Matt, which I'm embracing, I'm going to start it. Does he have experience in this?
He was in the military, he added some electric, that's what he did in the military. And then he has mechanical skills, and he's worked some equipment. And then we really liked his ambition to take some of the tests for the water. So we just kind of felt there was a good fill all the way around. We think he'd slide into that pretty well.
I think that's a fair offer, because Bill's been on for a year.
A little over a year. It'd still be $2, if he went with the 23, it'd still be $2 below him, which I think Bill would be okay with that.
And I think it wasn't that our discussion that we were going to bring him in, how, because you guys were going to hopefully require certain water, or, you know, stuff that we used to get money towards for completing, and so now we're just going to start hiring that, not have that completion?
Yep, and he was comfortable with that. He was well aware.
And make the motion to bring him on at 23 an hour?
Moved by, Jason, is there a second?
Is that still with the probation period? Is this how it's set up, how is that?
Hold on a second.
Do we, do we have in our policy a certain set of options, or did we remove that for probation?
For probation.
Is that?
Removed it, so that they could have that time to see what that bump would look like based on his performance.
So then would you want to start at 21 and possibly?
I mean, I, I'd be comfortable with 21, to allow, you know, them to have that time for six months. I'll make the motion to start at 21.
Six months.
Yeah, because it is six months, isn't it?
Six months.
Yeah, and then bump them up.
Set, set of options, bump them up, or just based on performance?
I personally would like to see it start at 21, and then based on your guys' performance and feedback of what you'd recommend for a bump up. That's, that's what I would like to see.
Is there a second?
One second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason, is there any other discussion on that? Any other discussion?
Is this a new one?
Yep.
So it is still 75 cents an hour raise after probation?
Yep.
That doesn't really count, we're more than that.
Yep.
I, I'm kind of a little bit cool, I think we start at 21, and then if he goes gangbusters, and the guys really like him, and he's getting things done, there's no reason why we can't bump him to 23 at that point.
I, I would agree.
Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any other? Next item is the Raffle Penner Mitch, or the Littleville Baseball Club.
We do that every year, don't we? I remember that. I'll make the motion to approve, yes.
Is there a second?
One second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Uh, the new bill, tax exemption, I did talk to Jason Taker on Sunday, and it was a mistake on his application. He is living there, so. And that's $150,000 for the first two years.
And that's all new, new bills, right? Mm-hmm. One second. I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Paul, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any other? Next item is Liquor Lightman's special event, or license transfer to the Armory, or the Fire Department's. What are you going to do? Just make a motion to approve, yeah?
Make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
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 Yeah, I thought we did. I saw that, and I read it, and I'm like, yeah, so we already voted on that.
Abby said we have, neither Abby nor Sarah said, yeah.
It didn't get done when the other motion was made.
Yeah, one positive, the motion was made.
Which one?
The.
To change your work. I bet because it was in the plan, it was in the reorganization plan, so it was all made in one motion.
You don't want to, you're probably right, so based on the Interbankal ticket with the reorganization plan? Oh, was this the signing thing? Yeah, we did this earlier. That was probably the week that.
July, it was the first year.
Yeah, Paul was in, when he moved over, it was done, whatever, we even after.
I see one motion, we'll do it again.
I know my past experiences with the bank estate, and fairly particular about the motion and the meaning of that.
I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jason, second by Nicole, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any other?
I think the 8D we did, but the 18 had already been received, maybe that's.
Over to lady plan, last plan.
Yep, this was a request slash late requirement for the USDA program. We should have this on file over at City Hall. Basically, what it is, is it's a plan, if we have an individual come to the office who isn't proficient in English, we have, this basically lays out the ways that we can work with customers who are hearing impaired, who are non-English speaking. And it's, it's just really basic, it, you know, basically you do a translate, and then you have an interpreter available through the pre-service that, that is divided. So it's just a plan that basically has that stuff.
And there's a lot of things that we have to, to, to.
For USDA? There were a few things, yes, we have to, at some point, I was going to bring this up a little bit later, but at some point, we have to get new bathroom signs that have grail on them, and they have to be positioned so high, and on certain sides of the door. And then we also have to get handicap hange out here for the handicapped accessibility. And then I think we got a little one assigned, we've got a small checklist, but there's pre-services through a couple of groups, ones in Red Fork, to come down and help us out with some of that stuff.
Well, there was a little bit of a war.
Does everybody all need it open or what?
No, I wouldn't, because threshold.
Are we too high?
Oh, like a roll up, yes.
Which I thought we approved that, let's never get that, that might have been all the time that might. We should make sure our business is in their own schedule.
Try to get that done. Thanks, John.
So do we need to accept this plan?
Yes, please.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make, the motion, is there a second?
One second.
By John, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Anybody like to address the commission tonight? A reminder that our February 17 meeting is actually going to be on the 18th. President State, and then the next meeting is the 3rd at 6:30. Unless there's not any other questions, I have this for the agenda, the motion to adjourn. Second?
One second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason, any other discussion? All in favor of CI? I have it, Paul opposed. Any other comments?